Okay, I'd like to call this meeting, this committee of the whole meeting to order for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, Nebraska Revives Statute eighty-four dash one four oh seven. A current copy of the act is available at this meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Schulte?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Heimer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Kreshaw?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Council President Augustine Schulte, the roll has been called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have one item on the agenda tonight. It's a discussion with Union Pacific Railroad in regard to the trains blocking intersections for extended periods of time. So I think Mrs. Vasicek will be, or Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Council President. We have had continued talks over a period of time about crossings being blocked, frequency of crossings being blocked, and this is continuing to plague our downtown area. There seems to be a time when it may be worse than others, seven to nine a.m., eleven-thirty to one-thirty, three-thirty to five-thirty. I think that the point that we try to get across is that blockages of any kind over an extended period of time can be a problem. You know, we have reached out to U.P. over time, and they have talked with us, but the feeling is that we haven't seen much resolution. A week or ten days ago, Councilman Heimer put together an email asking if we could reach out, what could we do, what could be done? I did reach out to U.P. and I got ahold of Kelly O'Brien, who has told us she would join us today. She's brought another individual with her, Erin Bat. These two would like to address the council and the community and tell us their point of view of what's going on here, and hear from us anything we'd like to add to what they will tell us. They have done some homework based on the input that they have gotten from us, from me mainly. Kelly O'Brien has had a history with the city of Columbus, with work we have done in the past in trains and crossings. Past Mayor Moser knows Kelly, Kelly knows, so she does have some history with us. With that, I'd like to just turn the meeting over to Kelly O'Brien and Union Pacific.
And I'll introduce Erin Bot, our general manager, who actually is in our operating department. Do you mind if I take off my mask?
Oh, you're welcome to.
It'll actually allow for you to better hear me and better diction. So again, my name is Kelly O'Brien. I have the responsibility of Senior Director for Public Affairs for Nebraska, Iowa, and Minnesota. And yes, I have communicated with Mayor Bulkeley about what has been transpiring. And I today am happy that I can have the general manager, Erin Bot, kind of explain some of the things we're looking at and explain our operating terminology in a way that hopefully everyone understands and in terms that everyone understands and not railroad terms. So we will do our best to do that. I am going to do, I'm going to start with a quiz, just to try and keep a little levity. Does everyone know what this is? Do they know where it's at? These are at every crossing, every crossing. These are uniform. The USDOT requires them at every crossing, railroad crossing, not just U.P.'s railroad crossing. And the two crossings we're talking about, Mayor, particularly, correct?
Right.
Have these, and they have the hundred number, they have the crossing number, and they have the railroad of origin of responsibility. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about that, and then I'm going to introduce Erin. What I would ask, and Erin's probably going to repeat it, is that when these are blocked, if we could take pictures, Public Works or Tara, of the crossings and share that in a newsletter so that we have data points of that, when it's happening in real time, if the public could be armed with that. I know that's a tall ask, but this is something I ask of other communities when we have blockages. It creates a way for us to know what's going on at that time. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? I'm seeing some yeses, but I'm also seeing some, okay, okay. And if this is ever missing at a crossing, private or public, it is the responsibility of Nebraska DOT. We work closely with Nebraska DOT on things. We work on viaducts with cities and counties and the state. We worked together when we did the viaducts here in Columbus. So we are part of your community. We want to be a good partner, and obviously, the reason we're here today is to answer a lot of questions and to listen. So I'm going to keep my remarks very brief, and I'd like to introduce Erin and have her come up and talk about the operating landscape and how those operating events work in the city of Columbus, and some of her thoughts and homework she's done. Is that fair, Erin?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to remove mine as well. So first of all, my name is Erin Bot. I'm the general manager for Union Pacific for what we call the Great Lakes Service Unit, which spans from Grand Island on to, into Illinois, just close to the Mississippi River, and then on up to Wisconsin and Minnesota. But prior to, I've been in this role for five weeks now, so not too long, but prior to that, I was the Chief Safety Officer. So I'm very familiar with the block crossing complaints and, you know, the concerns that were brought up. And I believe it was back in November that I don't know if it was you or somebody had reached out to the Public Affairs Team with Scott Moore and Kelly and talked about the two crossings that were being blocked for a prolonged period of time. At that time, being the Chief Safety Officer, I dug into data because I'm very data-driven. So what I did was I went and I looked at how many times we occupy the crossings, meaning that the gates went down and the gates go back up. We can tell how long those are down for and every time that they're activated. It's very manual, and we're working towards getting that more automated, but it's very manual. So we had a signal maintainer who goes out to that crossing right down here and downloaded it, and I could tell, at that time, then I could tell which train was actually the culprit that was blocking the crossing for the prolonged period of time. I'm going to explain kind of what happens, just so everybody understands the what and the why. We have a train that comes from North Platte. It comes over to Columbus, and it sets out cars for BD, sets out plastic pellets for BD, and then it also sets out cars for ADM. It sets out some other cars that go to Grand Island and to other industries around here, but those are the main ones for Columbus. It is scheduled to arrive in Columbus while everybody's asleeping, while everybody's asleep. So for the most part, nobody knows that work event is happening, which is that prolonged blocked crossing. What happens is when we have the ones that are blocked at eleven-thirty or seven in the morning, totally understand people are trying to get to work, go to lunch, go home, they come out late out of North Platte, for whatever reason. So the train's late, and then that's usually what causes the prolonged blocked crossing. So what we did in the past, in November, was we looked at how we make our pickups and our setouts when we drop cars off and pick them up. And we had some action items towards those to try to make the, we call it a work event, but to make those setouts and pickups go more efficiently and faster, so that we're getting off those crossings. It doesn't have to do with the length of the train. It doesn't have to do with how many cars are on it. Anytime we set those cars out here, that crossing is going to be blocked. So that's why we plan it, so that it comes in at night. So we looked at a variety of things to do. They were successful, I believe, for a little while, and then the storms hit, and we had some COVID complications, and trains got behind again. And so that's really, I want to field your questions and take those concerns that you have and really go back to my team and understand how do we make it, A, more on time, or even earlier, so that we don't have those crossings being blocked during the day. So I'm opening it up for any questions that you have. I will answer them best to my ability.
What did your data show how long those crossings were blocked?
So on average, on average, most of the trains go right through, right? So if I average all of them, it's less than ten minutes. But if I averaged just that train I was referring to out of North Platte, it's thirty minutes to an hour.
But you say you can identify, you can go to the crossing,
Mm-hmm.
and you can tell how long that, that was, that's my question. How long was that blocked? I don't, I guess I'm not concerned about averages. How long specifically in that one case was it blocked?
So that train runs every single day. So I looked at that train, it runs every day. The average that you're talking about, it wasn't just one case. So the average that we were blocking that crossing on that, and not specific train set, was thirty to sixty minutes when it stopped here.
That's not, is that satisfactory? That's not satisfactory? What is that, how does that fit into yours?
For a work event?
Yeah, I mean.
For a work event, that is pretty satisfactory.
To be blocked for an hour?
Yes, but not, no, for the work event. To block the crossing, it's not, no.
We have also, we have, I got hung up on this one for almost half an hour on a slow train. And he was a long train, and the engine just went by, and I sat there, and he was barely creeping. And he went right, he went all the way through town. I mean, he never stopped, never anything, but he just barely rolled, you know. His cars, I don't know how many cars there were, but there was a ton of them.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that, that's another thing. Do they have to slow down going through town? I mean, they...
Not necessarily, but some locations, there could be different variables for that. There could be what we call a speed restriction. Think of it like a construction zone. If the field guys are working on the track. So not normally would they, there's no rule that they have to slow down going through town. But I don't know, on that specific train, I don't have the answer as to why they were going slow.
Some of the attitude that people have that have talked to me about it, said, you know, they used to block Third Avenue and Twelfth Avenue. Now we got the viaducts put in there. Now they don't block them anymore. They don't stop there. They go on now, now they block twenty-third and twenty-sixth.
Yeah, those are...
Railroad was also, we were able to, we blocked twenty-fifth, or we eliminated twenty-fifth. But, you know, that, I guess that's the question that I have. You know, is there anything to that?
There may be. I'd have to dig into that a little bit more, being more on the new side to this role, not on the other side, but that's definitely something I can look at. Why they don't block twenty-fifth, right?
The question is that there's a feeling for many that because now we have viaducts on Third and Twelfth, there's not any train stopping at Third and Twelfth because you're not causing any disruption of the community.
That used to be the thing.
Now you just stop downtown, which disrupts the community. You know, I mean, that's the question. Are you not stopping out on Third and Twelfth now because we have a viad? I mean, that's the question for you.
That's the feeling.
And it's also, and it's also a lot of those trains that are blocking the, are blocking the streets are not coming from the west, they're coming from the east. Have you tried, have you figured out which trains are doing that?
No, the ones that showed in the data that were blocking them the longest came from North Platte, came from the west. Yeah.
Excuse me, I would have to say, because I live in that area pretty close, and I see when them trains are sitting there for quite a while, they get it going, they're going west. They aren't going east from North Platte. They're sitting there, and then they get going, they're going east. So I don't know where they're coming from.
Yeah, that's...
I'll definitely look back into the data. I can have it pulled again.
Thank you.
Are they not making up trains in Grand Island anymore?
They are doing a work event. They do that going west.
Everything else comes here?
That's right.
So how much of an increase in train traffic?
In train traffic? Well, so the train traffic across the whole sub-territory is up. However, the train traffic that stops here, that is, that's consistently every day. It's the same.
So you haven't seen an increase in Columbus?
In the cars coming in here, or train traffic stopping here?
Yes.
No, no. We would just put in more cars to come here. So the work event that I described may take a tad longer, but the actual traffic coming in here, it wouldn't be affected. There wouldn't be two trains stopping here a day for that.
So a question could be looked at is, is there a way, when you're stopping downtown, when you're having blockages downtown, could you avoid both crossings? I mean, if you got to block a crossing, could we block, could we block twenty, twenty, you know, could we be twenty-third east and leave one open, or vice versa? I mean, because what happens is you've just tied the hands of downtown.
Yeah, and that's what I'm going to take away from this, is I'm going to go see with my manager that owns this if we can work from the twenty-fifth street, the one with the viaduct, come up and not block one of the, because the thought has always been, leave one open. But if we have the viaducts, is it possible? And I just don't know that, being newer, so I will, I'll take that away.
Does it also take an hour or so to switch those cars or set them aside where the train doesn't even move? Because when they sit there at six-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning during breakfast, they're stopped. Same with the lunch and same within the afternoon.
Right.
I appreciate your comments and you showing up to help educate us. I just, I guess we're frustrated as a city, and I can't tell you how many comments or complaints I've gotten from citizens and local businesses.
Weekly.
Daily, weekly, and we just need to come up with, I guess, a solution.
Yeah.
And what can we do to stop it from happening?
Yeah, and please don't take that I'm here just to give you excuses, because that's what it feels like to you. I totally understand that. And the point of me coming was to hear the concerns, hear that it's, you know, there's twenty-fifth street, all of those things, so then I can go back and figure out a resolution. Because the, even if it shows up at three-thirty in the morning, and the majority of people aren't affected, we're still blocking that crossing for an hour, like you said, so.
I have a question. Kelly had mentioned something about the sign with the number on it.
Yes.
So if you are, if you're sitting at an intersection that's blocked, you have that number, and you mentioned something about sending a picture or something like, can you send a text message?
No.
All right.
I don't have that technology. What I meant, and I said morally, I guess, is what I really meant is that it would be good, many communities do this, put this, when there's problems, the actual picture. So like the Public Works Director takes a picture of the two crossings, puts it in there. If you are stuck at these crossings, please, you know.
But a citizen can call and use that number as well.
Yes, that's what we want.
Can I describe what happens when they do that?
I'll just give it to you.
So if you're, and trust me, I've done this myself, because I live next to the railroad. If you are at a crossing and it's blocked for longer than ten minutes is kind of the best practice, I guess I'll say. You call this number. It goes to what we call RMCC. It's our Risk Management Command Center. And they log what crossing you're at. They log how long you've been sitting at it. That's where this number, there will be a number here right on this. They'll take that number. If you say, yeah, I'm at DOTX one-one-two-five, they'll know exactly what crossing you're at. Then that information becomes another data set for me. When I look at them and I say, okay, we're blocked, citizens are complaining that we're blocking this crossing. So that's like the number one way for me to know if we have a problem in Columbus on Twenty-third Avenue. There's also another website with the FRA that you can go on. It's more, it's not a call-in, it's more of a website, website-based, but we look at that as well.
Thank you.
Is it a policy to have the locomotive just stop in the intersection? Because we had one last week at Twenty-third Avenue, just stopped in the center of the intersection.
No, is there a policy against it?
Is that a policy that you have that you would, that they shouldn't do that?
Oh, that they shouldn't?
Yeah.
If it's attended, if it's not attended, then that's a big problem, but...
The locomotive, I couldn't tell if it was attended or not, but he was stopped and for a long period of time. But, you know, once again, a long period of time to you and me are two different things.
Yeah, that should, if it's more than ten minutes, that shouldn't be happening.
Yeah, but he was clearly in the middle, I mean, one side or the other, I mean.
Hmm. No, that shouldn't be happening.
Like what they see, like their traffic control or dispatch, and that they have those signals, the crew itself, like how it's going?
Oh, yeah, sure. So out on the track, you might see big signal masks that have, sometimes they're red, sometimes they're yellow, sometimes they're green. So for instance, this train, particularly when it comes in and it makes its set out and its pickup, it will try to pull down to the end of town and get off these crossings, because this is also a crew change location, meaning another crew comes and takes over for the conductor and engineer that brought it into Columbus. A lot of times, they have, well, they have to have a green signal at this signal so that they can pull down. So that's what Kelly's talking about, that if the dispatcher doesn't give them the signal, they can't continue to pull down. So normally, that shouldn't be, that's just communication over the radio. Hey, we're ready to go. Give us a light, and we'll pull down.
I have another question. A lot of times, I notice when these trains are moving west, I don't know if it's U.P. or the line that goes up to Norfolk, but they go west, and then they go off up, you know, toward Bradshaw Park, up toward Norfolk. So is that the other railroad's problem, or is that U.P.?
That's NCRC.
Yeah, I would, I would think if we looked at like the sign that you've got, it would probably have Nebraska Central on it. And that is, you know, I mean, we're talking about downtown right now, and this issue that is a major, but if you're in that neighborhood, we're going to have the same input from those neighbors also.
Sure.
Because it becomes a major issue over there along that part of town, and there's constant issues with trains that have stopped for a long period of time. A lot of times in the morning, I know, that's when I've heard it from that area. You know, people trying to get out to get the kids to school, and the main ones are closed, and they're really having to go down to get across. So, yeah, I mean, and I think, Dennis, this discussion covers all of them, but U.P. probably can't help us with that, other than educate us on maybe the signage and some things we can do in that regard, or maybe you can help us. I don't know.
But I can tell my government affairs person, hey, I was at a meeting, you might want to check in with the city of Columbus about some blockages. I'm happy to do that, because we communicate with one another.
We need, yeah.
It needs to be on.
And we do, we do deliver cars for Albion, for the NCRC, and the managers, you know, talk to each other.
All right, thank you.
So can you explain a little bit, and I know it's something about switching tracks, but we have the, when they stop, back up, stop, they go forward, they stop, back up, all right? So sometimes it's not just sitting there, and they're not doing anything. It's this whole...
Yeah, so what happens, and I'm really going to try to not use railroad terminology, but what happens when they bring in this train, or any train that works here, right, that sets out and picks up? They, the conductor gets down, and he goes and he pulls a pin in between two of the cars so that they can break away from the rear of the train. So they'll leave part of the train further east or west, and then they'll bring those cars in that are specifically for Columbus. Because that, most of the trains that go across your community have a majority of cars. They have some for Council Bluffs. They have some for St. Paul. They have some for Mankato. So, but then they have the cars for Columbus. So they'll break away, so to speak, from the rest of their train, and that's what you see. The conductor will line a switch. It allows the engineer to bring him into the yard or set out track, and then he'll go back, and he may have to go back and set a couple more cars back on his train, and then come back and set out two more, whatever it is. So that's that back and forth that you see.
Three-day shutdown, hurt you guys?
Three days, three days shutdown?
Yeah, when the train stopped.
For the weather? Yeah.
I understand that, that's still creating a problem, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's going to happen for a while, too, I'm afraid.
Yeah. Weather, when you get below ten degrees, the airflow does not flow through the train line very well.
Any questions from the public? We've got some business owners that I think would like to address, please.
Yeah, we got the Lemon Street people.
Please do, you have to. And let them come up and speak, please.
Evening, Mayor. My name is Al Nedbalski. I reside at seven-two-seven Second Street. I also own a building downtown at twenty-five, twenty-four, Thirteenth Street, right on the corner of Twenty-sixth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. I can see the trains. They're longer than two hours. We clocked one at two and a half hours. They did not move at all. And the sad part is, a lot of times, oftentimes, you are one or two cars from clearing the intersection. And that's what's frustrating to a lot of us, is that you're that close to not having a problem, but you're still there, and you've been there as long as two and a half hours. Now, my question to you is this. If you're bringing in cars from North Platte, from North Platte to Columbus, and you have ADM, Beckton Dickinson, whatever, why can't your gentlemen, as soon as they get to town, because you have several lines of tracks west where it would not be a problem, you have at least three lines of tracks east under Third Avenue where it would not be a problem, why can't you divide your train as soon as you get to town and keep Twenty-third and Twenty-fifth open, and then go and do what you have to do? You have extra locomotives here all the time that could help with moving these cars around without blocking these two intersections. So that's my question, is why can't you arrange something with your people to avoid this? I think it's an easy fix if you just think about the number of tracks. If you look over the viaduct, off the viaduct at Thirty-third Avenue to the west and see the number of tracks that are there, there are several. And if you go east, you have at least three under the Third Avenue viaduct for sure. Now, those aren't all through lines, I'm sure. So why can't these trains, if they're going to be here, and they're going to be split up anyway, why can't they split them up first and then do what they have to, then go to ADM, or then go to Beckton Dickinson, without blocking Twenty-third and Twenty-fifth? But again, a lot of times, they're just one or two cars from clearing the intersection, but they're right there, and they've been there for, I think the longest is, we've clocked it as two and a half hours. Thank you.
I might make a correction there, Al. It's not Twenty-fifth Avenue, that's blocked off already.
No, Twenty-third, Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth Avenue. You said Twenty-fifth.
I'm sorry.
It's Twenty-sixth and Twenty-third. Yeah.
Got a question. The main train that brings the cars in, do they just park those off in the off-tracks, or do they deliver them?
No, they stay on the main line. So when I said that they break away from their train, they may have a hundred and thirty cars on their train, and they may have two to deliver here, or six to deliver here. So they'll leave the rest of their train and break away and bring those cars in. Now, can they, you know, stay further back and then bring them down? That's what I'm going to find out, but if they broke up the train like, sort of like you're suggesting, it would, we still would have to put it together. You would still block the crossing at some point. Two and a half hours is really excessive. There's just no excuse for that, so.
Well, and I think the other question that gets brought up, and Al said it very well, and I know other people have said the same thing, is that situation where the crossing is blocked, and, you know, in the old days, you used to walk, you can't do that anymore, but, you know... you, you, you know, it's right there, I mean, it's the last car.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and if that happens to be the, now, if it's the rear, right, but I mean, is there not some way in our, in our technological world today that we can't figure out that this is the crossing and this is the last car and we should be one hundred more feet that way? I, I mean, that, I think that's a, that's a big question that a lot of people-
It would, but, um, it, it all depends on the length of their train and where they're at at that switch when they're serving ADM or, um, BD. Because the length, let's say that it's seventy-eight hundred feet, and if they're seventy-eight fifty, that, that one car's gonna block. But they won't be able to get into that switch, get to that switch, do you see what I'm saying? Like, they'll go past it. So, um, what they would have to do is they would have to cut off, keep the train down towards, is it Twenty-Fifth, that's?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth is open.
Twenty-sixth. They would have to keep it east or west of the crossings, break away, then go serve the customers, then come back.
I'm just curious, I know you guys are always working on data, and why, why, why has this gone overlooked? Don't your supervisors look every day at deficiency and say, golly, jeez, we blocked them for two and a half hours? Now, who, who was responsible for that? I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm finding it hard to believe that you didn't identify these problems before we identified them. Because at some point, your efficiency, time is money, and I know you guys need to move as quickly as possible. Why, why, why do we have to bring it to you? Why wouldn't it have been brought up through your data saying, two and a half hours, well, what happened here?
Yeah, I mean, Kelly, Kelly can justify this. I think block crossings have been in the lime, in the spotlight for probably about six months. Um, they were definitely when I was in the safety role. Um, and what we have done, particularly what I did when I was in the safety role is I, we have thirty-two thousand crossings, so I would go after the, the ones that I got the most complaints about, the ones that I thought were the biggest hitters, and then we'd start working down, so.
Why does it have to be a complaint? But, I mean, it's gotta show up on your data somewhere.
No, but, well, and that's what I said earlier, we, we don't have, um, an automation for block crossings yet. We are working towards that, but we don't have, we would have to go out and manually download every crossing to have that data. So, for, for many, many years, hundred-and-fifty-six years, we didn't, the complaints is all we've, we have.
So, the, so the squeaky wheel in this situation gets the attention, is what you're saying?
That's right.
Whether it be a meeting like this, or that sign, or whatever-
Right.
Needs to continually happen.
Right.
Which, that, you know, I mean, as you probably can figure out, that adds to the frustration that people have.
Absolutely, a- absolutely, and, and, and we will get better, but, but, like I said, that's, I, I've preached this to Kelly and her team numerous times for two years when I was in safety, is I don't know what problem we have, unless, that was the only way I had that information, unfortunately.
Is there a specific location for the sign?
It's, uh, the same at every crossing, I think it's on the right side of the, of the crossing.
On the crosshairs, is that?
Uh, it's actually on a post there, so, um, and, and if it's missing, which I've, that's, I've come across that, that people have gotten angry, they rip them off, somebody gets, you know, those kind of things happen.
One, both ways on the road, I mean, on, on both sides?
Nope.
Yeah.
I would expect, though, that probably most people don't realize that that's a referen- a number that they can call if the, if the train is stopped. I think they think like if there's some kind of an emergency or something like that. I, I mean, I've seen it lots of times and then, and, you know, you just don't think of a blocked train as a, or a blocked intersection as an emergency or-
Another way to remember is UPRR COP.
I'm sorry, what?
UPRR COP.
That's the phone number, UPRR COP.
We're hoping Carolyn share, shares that information in the paper.
Yes, take a picture at the intersections, Carolyn, of the blue sign, when you post your story, so we can see. But, yeah.
Does the railroad like viaducts?
Yes.
Hold that thought.
Yep. I already talked to Al Leal to Bar and Endot today, telling him I was coming to this meeting today to say, um, we're probably gonna talk about viaducts, contributing to them and working with the community. So, yes, anytime we can do a great, what's called a grade separation or a viaduct, we're in.
Well, we only really have one intersection that that would affect anymore, because the other one would have probably a pedestrian overpass or something, so that would be closed too. I think it's one of those deals where we give up two for, and, and three actually, for the one that's crossed over. And I think that's about all we have left, isn't it? Okay, so, just, just keep, remember that.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Well, and a key, a key phrase you made was your contributions to helping with that.
That's right.
That was a bit, that, that was, that was a bit-
You have to, it's, it's actually, every railroad company has to give, um, a contribution, so you don't get to, that's actually mandated in the statute when working on this, at the state level. And you can get that information from Endot if you, if you don't, if you wanna look into it further.
Yes, and I have a question then in addition, so, um, at the crossing or the switching, the switch, the place where they switch, they have to pull the pin, okay. So, do those have to be in a specific location? I mean, is there any way that you can put those further out of town so that when you do switch those?
No, that's what I was referring to earlier, so it would have to be further outside of, of town, either west or east, and then they, then they break away and then they come down further.
To move, so what's more cost-efficient for you guys to contribute to a viaduct or to move your, your switching yards out of town? I mean, and I'm just asking that because I know there are citizens that don't want two more viaducts through the middle of town. And they're, they say to me, why can't they move their switching yards further out of town? Why are we footing another bill for another viaduct for the railroad? Is, is the thing they're asking me, and I know that you contribute to that, but that's the question, is why are we changing our community for them? Is what they're asking, and so my question is, what's more cost-effective?
Who was here first?
Well, I mean, yeah, I see that, but once again, I mean, it's a question that's been brought up to me, so I'm just simply asking.
I, I, I could definitely figure that out, but I, I don't have that answer for you.
Sure, oh, I know.
It's all in velocity, velocity, you know, of how, how fast we move across, so, time and, time and efficiency, like, like you stated.
The, uh, the, the need for another viaduct or the desire for another viaduct, obviously, we all know the, the cost involved. Will the railroad, but, you know, would they possibly participate in a larger percentage than in the past?
Well, we have to consider that, so we have to weigh that, so I can't comment on what we would do, uh, but we do negotiations all the time with communities and, um, so, that's something we can talk about. I'm part of that, engineering's part of that, um, Erin is operating, she weighs in, so, um, it's more of a, a team environment on that one. Our public project, we're all, begins that conversation, I think we talked about that a little bit.
And, and thankfully, um, your community has not had crossing accidents. You know, it's not, not plagued with crossing accidents or trespasser accidents. Um, that's, that's not the same everywhere, you know, we've, in Fremont, I know that they're very, uh, they're doing very well too, they've gone over a thousand days without a crossing accident, but, you know, when you have, um, some crossings that were, unfortunately, when you block crossings, that can produce bad habits, so people will try to beat the train. People will try to walk around it and not see the other train coming on main, the other main. Um, and then you have a fatality, and that, that's ultimately what we do not want. So, however, you know, we resolve it, um, that's really one of the other messages I wanted to just leave was, we'll, we'll work on our issues, but please do not go around the gates. Please do not try to beat that train, cause when you don't win and you don't beat it, usually, there's a life lost. And I've, I've seen way too many of those, so.
Either of you gentlemen would wanna make a comment on how it's affected your business?
Yep.
I'll, I'll come up here for, I'll give you a little two cents worth.
Sure.
Uh, Corey Reader, twelve Timberwood Drive, um, own a business on the other side of the railroad tracks on Twenty-fifth Avenue, Eleventh Street. Um, it, it's an ongoing issue, almost I'd say, pushing a daily basis, which, which we've all talked about. But, ten minutes, most people would sit through, handle, swallow, but thirty, forty, I, I was down there the other day, two hours. But I had a, was, was walked in, we had to go around to get there, two hours later, when we came out, still there. That's like last Thursday. Um, I, I maneuver for my business back and forth across the lot, being, so it, I mean, multiple times, um, weekly. So, it's, it is an issue, that sign will get lit up because my business can see with the, sitting inside the door, so there'll be plenty of people to be able to monitor it on a daily basis, so, um, that will get used extensively. So, you'll know where it's at.
Thanks.
Um, because when I expressed to my councilman, who do I need to light up? So, we, at least, you just wanna find a solution, I get it, right? And, and hopefully, there is one, and that would be my question, is do you see that it's a solvable problem?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think anything's solvable.
Okay, um, and, and like I said before, my comment to, to Troy was, it di- it didn't seem like this was an issue before, so, in which we've talked about it, I didn't even realize that they changed down there and that's probably a good thing, if you didn't realize it, it doesn't affect anything. Now, it's affecting our community, or, or my business, I mean, it's actually, I can't give you exact numbers, but I know it has affected my business. Because it's noon time, you can't come from his business, get to my business to have lunch, cause you can't get back, get there, you can't call in, uh, serve food, you can't call in, can't get it, just, it, it's affecting my business. You know, so it's, it's, you know, which is affects our community and, and our ability to service it, so, um, definitely a problem. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks very much, and do, do talk.
And I have a couple more questions for you.
Sure.
Uh, do you have any data, like Grand Island, Grand Island has two underground crossings. Is it cheaper to build an underground crossing or a viaduct? Go over the railroad?
Um, so, we, we prefer to go over. Um, under, um, creates a lot of, uh, problems with people not paying attention to the vertical height, uh, of things and hitting things.
What truck-
And, uh, so I would tell you, uh, a community in Iowa that, um, twice a week, it's hit, it's a, you know, it's-
That could be an issue, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I would really not encourage that.
I can see that.
Yeah, so that's, that's a lot of why we got away from that.
I, I could add, just from the past history of looking at what we have done for viaducts, going under was always, uh, 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 looked at, always brought up as an idea. Uh, we never took it past the idea stage, uh, I think two reasons, uh, water table? Water table was probably number one, and number two, it is more costly to go under than it is go up.
Yeah.
And so, between those two, we just never looked any further than that, Dennis.
I always wondered about that.
No, it's a good question, and I would tell you, uh, I have several mayors out west that would, um, be happy to tell you why not too, so.
I think that's a-
For those reasons.
That's a good lead in to where we are now internally, we have an RFQ put together, uh, that will be going out soon, which would be our request to take a look at what is required from the, the, you know, the engineering side to, to tell us who can help us put together the, the thoughts and the processes for this, for a viaduct.
And traffic count, um, comes into that.
All together, everything.
So, um, having a good traffic count, uh, something recent of cars per day, um, we always ask people to do that. Um, we can do it ourselves, but a lot of times, we ask the communities if they have something like that, and usually, Public Works has something like that.
Unfortunately, that data's kinda skewed with the, the tracks being blocked.
Good point, thanks. Touche, Tom, touche, Troy, touche.
People, people find other ways to go, I mean, now they go out of their way to get down to the viaduct.
Yes, Dan.
Question is, with the XL Pipeline shut down, can we expect more coal trains to be going through town then?
Um, I don't, I don't know that, to be honest.
I mean, coal trains really ain't a problem, cause they whiz through town pretty fast.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if we'll be having more coal trains.
You know, our business ups and flows, so, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, there, there may be a slight uptick in them, but not, not to-
Okay, well, thank you for the input.
You're not gonna just see coal trains going by constantly.
Yeah.
You know, the one other thing that, um, I thought of when-
Erin, would you speak, I mean, please, just cause we are recording?
Yep. The one, the other thing too, um, cause I don't want you to think that if a train stops, it's cause there's, they're working, but sometimes a train breaks down, you have locomotive failures, um, we have what's called an undesired emergency. Those types of events take, take the two, two and a half hours to resolve. Um, most times, a work event shouldn't, shouldn't, well, all times, a work event should not take that long, so, um, if you do have these prolonged periods where it's really long, that, just know that that, that sometimes does happen. Um, it, it's, it's something that has to be resolved as quickly as possible, but it does take a lot, a little bit longer.
I have questions, I'm sure there's more.
I just, a thought then too, then, when you have something where a train is gonna be, have a, a, something where it needs to be stopped and repaired or something, like you just described, isn't there any way then that you can communicate to the city or to the-
We always do, the, it, if we, if our train's going into emergency, the dispatcher is required by rule to call RMCC, that same line, and then they're required to reach out to the local authorities of, of the location. So that we can notify people, particularly for emergency response and, and all that as well.
Okay.
And so, and, and there's opportunity that, it, it depends on where, um, what's going on with the train, if they can cut the crossing, meaning pull the pin, like I said, and, and break away from the train, if they know that they're gonna be there for a long amount of time. But if it's something's wrong with the air, they have to have that train together, otherwise, they can't tell where the problem is.
Oh, okay.
What, um, kind of urgency does the railroad, uh, management place upon the crews that are actually doing the work? Now, you two gals are here dodging brick bats from the council and the public, but the crews have to have a sense of urgency to get done what they need to get done without, uh, causing a problem as far as safety is concerned, but is there a sense of urgency that is, that, that the railroad passes on to their crews?
Um, yes, although it doesn't mean that it's always there, um, but particularly with this work event, if you, if you would go down while this work event's happening, you're gonna find a manager. Um, that's back in November, um, when we spoke with Mr. Bulkeley, that we had a manager out there with every work event to ensure that we weren't taking long and that there was that sense of urgency. Um, but if, if, if a manager's not there and, and the crew's not motivated to get it done, I mean, that's, sometimes that does happen.
Well, that's human nature.
Yeah.
But, uh, I just wondered how, how much and how often management passes a sense of urgency on to the crews?
If, if, there has been no shortage of efficiency in the last, um, two years that I can, for sure, um, the, the, the talk of efficiency, that has been probably more heightened than I've ever seen in my fifteen-year career of get your work done, get across the road, so.
Thank you.
The group, the group that dispatches, what is their timeframe of work? Is they, are they lifetimers or do they switch a lot, or, you know?
So, I started as a train dispatcher.
Pardon?
I started as a train dispatcher.
Okay.
Yep, so-
The bottom of the, bottom of the, of the, of the list of-
Well, geez, I didn't think so, but-
How's that make you feel?
You know, I'm fro- I went to Lindsay Holt family, so I like to think that I did okay, you know, coming out of a small town, but, um, they, it is an entry-level position, if that's the nicer way of saying that, yeah.
That's a nicer way to say it.
Yeah. It is, it, yeah.
There's a lot of switching or a lot of change of people.
Not really, my husband's a dispatcher, he's done it for sixteen years. Um, you have some, you have some that move on, like myself, that, that wanna move on and go into management, and then you have, uh, we have dispatchers that have been there for thirty, forty years.
I got some that moved on.
Oh. It's, it's not the easiest lifestyle. It's, it's not the easiest lifestyle.
Any other questions from the, from the, from the audience, any?
How long do you think you'll have information back to us about our questions and comments?
I would like to do what I would call a go-to-it and, and come out and do documentation of the trains daily. And I think usually for me, 30 to 60 days is, is what you need to have a good substantial data set to really understand the problem.
Well, if there's no other, if there are no other questions or comments, then.
I just, I just want to tell you thank you. Appreciate your time for coming out and meeting with us this evening.
Thank you.
This should have been done back November.
Five weeks. Only been the job five weeks.
Sure we solved it.
Alright.
What are you guys doing next? You won't want to do this very long.
Trust me, I don't want to block the crossing any longer, any more than you do, so.
Troy, Troy hit it on the head. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Then if there is, are no other comments or questions, then we shall adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.